Okay, now you've got a signal. Okay, great.
Council meeting of August 26, 2025, please reconvene. I think we're ready for roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proceeding with roll call. Members participating from non-public locations should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of the roll call. Councilmember Pro Tempore Tasha Kama?
Aloha, Kaka Hiyaka Chair and all those in the chambers and on the Kako land. I'm here in my workstation and I am alone.
Vice Chair Yukile Suki Mura? Good morning, everybody. Looking forward to a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton?
Aloha, Kaka Hiyaka Kako.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson?
Aloha, Chair. Councilmembers, community members, there's no testifiers at the Lanaii District Office, and I'm alone on my side of the office in my workspace. Thank you.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez?
Aloha, Kaka Hiyaka Kako. There are currently no testifiers at the Molokai District Office, but we do have testifiers from Molokai Online that will be testifying later. Mahalo, Chair.
Councilmember Tom Cook?
Aloha, good morning. There's no testifiers in the Kahihi Office, but people are on standby. Looking forward to the meeting.
Councilmember Nohelani Uuhajins?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm at the Paia District Office with my EA buddy Almeda. There are no testifiers here right now, but if anybody chooses to testify, I will be here for the duration of the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Sheen Sanancy?
Aloha, Poha Luakako. Here at my home office, I'm here by myself, and there are no testifiers at the Hana District Office.
Council Chair Alice Lee?
Aloha, my dear colleagues and to everyone listening and watching.
Chair, there are nine members present. Soa Quorum is present to conduct the business of the council. For the record, I'm the Deputy County Clerk Rochelle Thompson. Also present from our office of the county clerk are Legislative Division staff Joyce Marashige, Del Yoshida, and Arthur Suayama. And assisting the council with maintaining order and decorum is Council Ambassador Ryan Martins. Joining the office, joining the meeting from the Office of Council Services is Director David Rotts and Legislative Attorney Peter Hanado. And from the Department of the Corporation Council is Corporation Council Victoria Taki Yasu.
Okay, opening remarks will be provided by yours truly. So I just, as you know, I'm not one for long speeches about myself. And what I'd like to do this morning is recognize a very special person who I've been derelict in thanking for the lay that she provided to us, to all of us, I think about a week ago, and I did not, did not have a chance to thank her for it. And of course, Auntie Laurie on Molokai, I'm speaking about you. And I'm taking my opportunity for opening remarks to thank you for your thoughtfulness and for always being so kind and courteous when you testify. We really appreciate that. We don't always agree on the same subjects, but nevertheless, you are an inspiration to all of us, an example of how everyone should behave when testifying and sharing opinions. So again, I'm sorry I didn't thank you earlier, but I'm thanking you now in front of this wide variety of people, about maybe 35, including the people watching at home. We don't attract big crowds, but nevertheless, it's not the number that counts, it's the thought. So aloha to you, have a wonderful day from all of us at the county council. Now, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Peru. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with today's agenda, may I please request that everyone keep their microphones muted unless it's your turn to speak. As a reminder, testimony must pertain to items on the meeting agenda. When testifying, please direct your remarks to the council and not to an individual.
Okay, now you've got a signal. Okay, great.
Council meeting of August 26, 2025, please reconvene. I think we're ready for roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proceeding with roll call. Members participating from non-public locations should state who, if anyone, except minors, is present with them as part of the roll call. Councilmember Pro Tempore Tasha Kama.
Aloha, kakahiaka Chair, and all those in the chambers and on the kaku land. I'm here in my workstation, and I am alone.
Vice Chair Yuki Le Sugimura.
Good morning, everybody. Looking forward to a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Tamara Paulton.
Aloha, kakahiaka kaku.
Councilmember Gabe Johnson.
Aloha, Chair, councilmembers, community members. There's no testifiers at the Lanaii District Office, and I'm alone on my side of the office in my workspace. Thank you.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Aloha, kakahiaka kaku. There are currently no testifiers at the Molokai District Office, but we do have testifiers from Molokai online that will be testifying later. Mahalo, Chair.
Councilmember Tom Cook.
Aloha, good morning. There's no testifiers in the Kehoe Office, but people are on standby. Looking forward to the meeting.
Councilmember Noheleani Uuhajins.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm at the Paia District Office with my EA buddy Almeda. There are no testifiers here right now, but if anybody chooses to testify, I will be here for the duration of the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Sheen Sanancy.
Aloha, luakaku. Here at my home office, I'm here by myself, and there are no testifiers at the Hana District Office.
Council Chair Alice Lee.
Aloha, my dear colleagues, and to everyone listening and watching.
Chair, there are nine members present. Soa Quorum is present to conduct the business of the council. For the record, I'm the Deputy County Clerk Rochelle Thompson. Also present from our office of the county clerk are Legislative Division staff Joyce Marashige, Del Yoshida, and Arthur Suyama. And assisting the council with maintaining order and decorum is Council Ambassador Ryan Martins. Joining the office, joining the meeting from the Office of Council Services is Director David Rotts and Legislative Attorney Peter Hanado. And from the Department of the Corporation Council is Corporation Council Victoria Taki Yasu.
Okay. Opening remarks will be provided by yours truly. So I just, as you know, I'm not one for long speeches about myself. And what I'd like to do this morning is recognize a very special person who I've been derelict in thanking for the lay that she provided to us, to all of us, I think about a week ago, and I did not, did not have a chance to thank her for it. And of course, Auntie Laurie on Molokai, I'm speaking about you, and I'm taking my opportunity for opening remarks to thank you for your thoughtfulness and for always being so kind and courteous when you testify. We really appreciate that. We don't always agree on the same subjects, but nevertheless, you are an inspiration to all of us, an example of how everyone should behave when testifying and sharing opinions. So again, I'm sorry I didn't thank you earlier, but I'm thanking you now in front of this wide variety of people, about maybe 35, including the people watching at home. Okay, we don't attract big crowds, but nevertheless, it's not the number that counts, it's the thought. So aloha to you. Have a wonderful day from all of us at the county council. Now, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we proceed with today's agenda, may I please request that everyone keep their microphones muted unless it's your turn to speak? As a reminder, testimony must pertain to items on the meeting agenda. When testifying, please direct your remarks to the council and not to an individual council member or member of the public. Each testifier will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes on each item. For individuals wishing to testify on teams, please click the Raise Your Hand button to be added to the testifier log. If you are calling in, please follow the phone prompts to be added to the log. If you wish to testify anonymously, please sign in as anonymous, and you will be given a testifier number. Decorums shall be maintained at all times. Any person who behaves in a manner that disrupts, disturbs, or impedes the orderly conduct of any council can, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of present council members, be ejected or banned from council meetings, or, if participating remotely, muted or dropped from the meeting. Examples of disruptive behavior include, but are not limited to heckling, shouting, use of profanity, threatening or slanderous remarks made to any member of the council, staff, or general public. All meeting attendees, whether online or in person, are expected to wear clothing in a manner that is respectful of others and appropriate for these proceedings. For example, attendees should wear a shirt when testifying, as well as the rest of it, you know, slippers, pants, whatever. Ms. Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, individuals may testify on any item on today's agenda. The first to testify is Anders Lyons, testifying on Resolution 25-167, and he will be followed by Wes Low.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the council. I am Honest Lyons, Executive Director of Halema Olu, an independent living nonprofit here on Maui, in Maui County. I'm here to testify in support of 25-167 for the Keihahua development. And I and some of our team members will be here throughout the discussion for any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, members? Okay. No questions, thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Wes Low. And Mr. Low, please let us know which item you're testifying on, to be followed by Leslie Milner.
Aloha, Chair Lee, Vice Chair and council members. I am testifying on Committee Report 2550 related to Resolution 25139, CD1. My name is Wesley Low. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Haulimiko Health Services, here testifying in support of the resolution. And myself and my staff will be available for any questions that come up during the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, members? Okay, no hands. Ms. Clerk, please help me look for hands, because I don't see it all the time online. No questions, next testifier.
Chair, the next testifier is Leslie Milner. And Ms. Milner, please let us know which item or items you'll be testifying on. She'll be followed by Heidi Drawn Balzazar.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, councilmembers. As you can see, I am heading from the airport, so today I'm doing my best, Councilmember Rollins Fernandez. I'm testifying on Bill 115, Bill 116, and Bill 117. These first two are housekeeping bills. Bill 115 is adding .9 LTA under one of the grant programs. That's for graduate assistance. Bill 116 is just correcting the TMK. Bill 117, some equipment for the fire department came in over what was budgeted, so we're asking to increase that allocation, but that is in Appendix A Part 2, so no additional funds are needed. We're just increasing the amount in the line item. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Questions? Vice Chair Sugimura. And then Member Johnson.
Okay. Thank you. So thank you very much for testifying at the airport, and I want to just be clear that you're asking to get this passed on first reading today, 115, 116, 117.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, that's correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. My question was asked and answered. Aloha.
Thank you very much. No other questions, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next testifier is Heidi Drawn Balzazar, and please let us know which item you're testifying on. She'll be followed by Lala Johnson.
Hi, Chair. This is, and councilmembers, this is Heidi Drawn Balzazar. I'm testifying on the Bill 118, repealing the Commission, Board of Commission on Children and Youth. I am hoping that the board, the county council will reconsider that. We are, we are a green board, like we're new members and trying to get our footing. So we have undertaken some projects that are currently underway in the, in the, in the community, and one of them is the talking is teaching. So I'm hoping that you guys will consider not repealing our board. Thank you.
Questions, members? Thank you for your testimony. I, for sentimental reasons, I agree with you, but I don't, I think I might be in the minority. Thank you. Next question, next, next testifier.
Thank you, Chair. The next testifier is Lala Johnson, testifying on Resolution 25-167, to be followed by a testifier with the first name Harmony.
Aloha, mai kaku. Ova'o, olala Johnson ko'inoa avua'e'u. I am here with my kupunas. I bring them with me for today. I am here today to speak in strong opposition to the proposed exemptions for Resolution 25-167. I want to state it clearly that I support the critical need of the housing crisis in our community. However, I am deeply concerned that these exemptions would undermine the very principles of good governance, public trust, and fiscal responsibility that our county code was designed to uphold. I have reviewed the proposed exemptions and find them to be not just problematic, but in direct conflict with the respectful and responsible approach to development. First, the exemption to Section 3.35.07 A1 and A3 would allow for the transfer and sale of property with only the written consent of the Director of Housing. This bypasses the public process and removes the Maui County Council's vital oversight role. The public has a right to be part of the decision-making process for projects that use our tax dollars, and these exemptions would create a dangerous loophole for transparency. Second, the proposed modification to the loan's position is an unacceptable risk to our community's finances. By allowing the county's ban or loan to be in a third or lower position, we are placing the public's investment in the most vulnerable spot. This is not a prudent or responsible use of the Affordable Housing Fund, and a project's financial viability should not come at this expense of our taxpayer dollars. Finally, I want to address the most concerning part of this exemption, especially as it relates to this specific project on land from, as MEO states, from their title that they received from Luna Lilo Trust. The first exemption would waive the county's requirement that be held in perpetuity. This rule is meant to ensure long-term affordability. However, the very land we are discussing has a history that is in direct conflict with this concept of perpetuity, perpetuity. King William Charles Luna Lilo, 1874, which established the trust, explicitly directed that this land, or his lands, were to be sold to provide funds to care for his people. The land's original purpose was not to be held forever, but to be liquidated for a noble cause. This brings us to the fundamental question. If the very idea of perpetuity title is already in conflict with the historical and original purpose, let me just come to the conclusion. This project can move forward, if it, if it does, without these exemptions. Upholding our own county code on their historic land, on this historic land, is a matter of maintaining accountability and respect for the public's investment. We should not be recreating a loophole for a required, for a requirement that is already in conflict with the land's original purpose. I, I for myself care about this, if some of you do not care. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions, Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, Ms. Johnson. Mahalo for your testimony this morning. So with all the concerns that you outlined in the proposed exemptions to the attached, attached resolution in Exhibit 1, are you asking the council to refer to committee for further discussion so that we can address your concerns?
Yes.
Mahalo for that clarification.
Mahalo.
More questions? If not, thank you very much. May we have the next testifier?
Chair, the next testifier is Harmony. Please let us know which item you're testifying on, and she will be followed by Connie Lee Williams.
Chair, I just gotta go to the exact thing real quick.
Harmony? Your turn.
Sorry. Was this your, I was supposed to wait. Thank you. Thank you, Chair and councilmembers. My name's Harmony Williams. I am the former Executive Director of Sustainable Molokai, and I'm here to testify on Bill 95 regarding the grant of $50,000 budget amendment, amendment, which is now in the second reading. Mahalo for everyone who helped to get it passed on the first reading, and we're just really looking forward to closing this grant out. I will mention that I was able to present to the Komike Aloha Aina Committee last week on 8/21. Specifically, this is the Molokai Climate Change and Sea Level Rise Adaptation and Resiliency Plan. I know there were a few questions around the timeline and just kind of how the project played out as far as the original timeline and the amended timeline. And so I'm here to just help, I guess, provide a short summary of some of those questions that I had heard asked, as well as be available for any potential follow-up questions. Just to summarize, our, our project was officially started in July 2021. It was initially proposed to end July 1, 2023. There were just a lot of circumstances in 2021 that made things a little bit more confusing than the normal kind of orderly timeline that we expected. The first being that I was offered a job with the Hawaii Good Food Alliance in 2021. So that year, I kind of did double duty, both running Sustainable Molokai and the Hawaii Good Food Alliance, until we were able to hire a new Executive Director, which is Tihani Kalakahi, who is, I believe, here today. So during that time, I switched to Hawaii Good Food Alliance and became a contractor to Sustainable Molokai, continued on with this project, but not as Executive Director. So I just wanted to note that because, because of that, there were some handoff things that didn't go as smoothly as, as usual and typical for our organization. I apologize for that, as well as just the fact that OCS does not typically issue grants. So I feel like it was kind of a steep learning curve for all of us. But in summary, the bulk of the project was completed during that two-year timeline. As we were nearing the deadline of July 2023, we were in the midst of conversations with our team, as well as our county council, county council members, about if we could add three additional sites that had been identified as critical to our community, specifically the Kalamauula landfill, the old Molokai Electric or Miko Brownfield sites, and the Ko'pa'akea Cemetery. We talked to our team, including our consultants, decided that we really should include those, but to do so would require additional time, as well as an additional $50,000 for the engineers and planners, who had to increase their scope from 10 sites to 13. So I think Director Rotts did a great job last time in that committee meeting of kind of outlining all the really specific details. And so I will not repeat those here, but happy to answer questions if there are any related to that. And just in summary, you know, our, our deliverables are completed, they have been submitted, we were able to present last week, and we're just really hopeful that we can wrap this up today. And I just, you know, I will try and stick around if there's questions for when this comes up on the agenda, but I do have another meeting at 12:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, members? No questions, thank you.
Chair, currently the last testifier signed up is Connie Lee Williams, testifying on Resolution 25167. Connie Lee Williams?
Aloha, kaku. My name's Connie Lee Williams, testifying on Resolution 25167. As I'm reading this exemption, one, it's kind of confusing because, you know, it says the, the title has to be in perpetuity by the grantee or borrower, so that would be the developer, right? And then, but then it says unless conveyed to the county or to qualified nonprofit or community land trust. And so to me, it sounds like this resolution is an admittance that no party that is involved in the project, whether it's the county, a qualified nonprofit, which I understand would be MEO, or other community nontrusts, has title in perpetuity. Otherwise, you wouldn't be trying to get a resolution for this exemption. So that's one thing. The exemption two, you know, it, that part of the code defines what the county council's fiduciary, fiduciary duty is by code. So why would the county council be voting on a resolution to give up its fiduciary duties? You know, it's like you, the council gets paid to do its job. So why, why, why would you vote to not do your job? And if that's the case, then salaries need to be cut, so that way, you know, you're not getting paid for not doing your jobs. And of course, this also would, that exemption would remove the public process, because everything that comes to the county council has to have public testimony. And so by, you know, moving power over to the Director of Housing, this exemption is attempting to remove testimony like, like this right now, from any future part participation in the process, which I don't know, I kind of reserve my right to be able to participate in the process. And then the last thing is, you know, trying to give a $6 million loan through these exemptions with these questions about the intentions behind that aren't being spoken or written down on this resolution, to me, it kind of sounds like a $6 million racketeering scheme. So there's that as well. So that's just my testimony for today.
Thank you. Questions, members? No questions, thank you.
Mahalo.
Chair, currently Mr. Williams is the last testifier, so go ahead and give last call for any testimony at the beginning of the meeting. Seeing no one in chambers or online raising their hands, we'll count down three, two, one. Chair, there's no one here to testify at the beginning of the meeting.
Members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for the beginning of the meeting?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, moving on to committee reports. To committee reports, currently there is no one signed up to testify, so we'll go ahead and give last call for any testimony on the committee reports, counting down three, two, one. Chair, there's no one to testify on the committee report.
Any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony on committee reports?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, from the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, is Committee Report 25-48, recommending first reading of Bill 93, CD1, 2025, to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget by amending Section 3B17, Department of Police, by transferring one equivalent personnel and $57,192 in Category A, salaries for the reallocation of a vacant emergency services dispatcher to position from the Technical and Support Services Program to an investigator five position in the administration program.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendations in Committee Report 25-48.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, second by Pro Tem Kama, to approve the recommendations in Committee Report 25-48. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. Bill 93, 2025, CD1, transfers one vacant emergency services dispatcher to position and $57,192 in the salaries of the Department of, from the Department of Police's Technical and Support Services to the administrative program. The funds in position will support a new investigator position under the administrative program to support the police commission's overnight and investigative duties as required under the charter. I respectfully ask for the members' support for my motion. Thank you, Chair.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I see nine ayes, zero noes, motion carries.
Thank you, members.
Chair, Member Paulton is excused.
Member Paulton is excused. So eight ayes, one excused, Member Paulton, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, from the Water and Infrastructure Committee, is Committee Report 25-49, recommending the following. One, first reading of Bill 79, CD1, 2025 to one, establish a paid parking zone and adopt a digital paid parking zone map for county beach parks in South Maui. Two, repeal paid and permit parking zone maps for Wailuku Town and adopt updated Two, repeal paid and permit parking zone maps for Wailuku Town and adopt updated maps. And three, amend special parking regulations under Title 10, Article 2, Maui County Code for clarity and consistency, and two, filing a resolution 25-130.
Okay. Member Cook?
Chair, I move to adopt the recommendations in Committee Report 25-49.
Second.
Moved by Member Cook, second by Vice Chair Sugimura, to approve the recommendation in Committee Report 25-49. Discussion, Member Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Your Water and Infrastructure Committee met on August 4th, 2025 to discuss Bill 79 and Resolution 25-130. Bill 79 establishes Kamaoli Beach Parks 1, 2, and 3 as designated locations under the Park Maui Pilot Parking Program. The Department of Transportation intends to launch the Pilot Parking Program in early 2026, pending permit reviews and mobile app testing. In addition, it revises the paid and permit parking zone maps for Wailuku Town to remove the Eau parking lot and the County of Maui parking lot. The maps originally attached to Resolution 25-130 were incorporated into the proposed CD1 version of Bill 79 to comply with the Section 1077 010A Maui County Code. The CD1 version also clarifies the Director of Transportation's authority under Chapters 1077 and 1078 resolves conflicts between parking pass fees and fiscal year 2026 budget, and includes non-substantive revisions. Because the maps are now incorporated into Bill 79, Resolution 25-130 is no longer needed as a standalone item, and your committee recommends it be filed. Your committee voted 7-0 to recommend passage of Bill 79 CD1 on first reading and filing Resolution 25-130. I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one excused. Member Paulton, motion carries.
Chair, from the Water Authority, Social Services, and Parks Committee is Committee Report 25-50, recommending adoption of Resolution 25-139 CD1 to express the county's intent to support a future land transfer or agreement for a portion of the Kahului Community Center Park Site, identified for real property tax purposes as Tax Map Key 238007097, located at 275 Uhu Street, Kahului, Hawaii. The land would be used to develop an approximately 100-unit workforce rental housing project by Halemakua Health Services in partnership with Ala Kai Development, 2 LLC.
Mr. Senancy?
Mahalo Chair. Move to adopt the recommendation in CR 25-50.
Second.
Moved by Member Senancy, second by Vice Chair Sugimura, to adopt the resolution as recommended in Committee Report 25-50. Discussion, Member Senancy.
Mahalo Chair. Your Water Authority, Social Services, and Parks Committee met on August 4th, 2025 for Resolution 25-139. Your committee received a joint presentation from Halemakua and Ala Kai Development on the project's history, design, and status. The development of the Kahului Community Center Park Site began in 2018 to address the need for a new healthcare delivery system for elderly services in a central location. The council supported granting Halemakua a lease and creating the Kahului Community Center Park Master Plan to develop rehabilitation and senior facilities. Members, in 2024, the master plan was then modified to incorporate a workforce rental housing project after consultation with the Maui Economic Recovery Commission. The proposed workforce rental housing project is designed for entry to mid-level healthcare and education workers, along with individuals displaced by the August 2023 Maui wildfires. It will consist of approximately 100 workforce rental units, with rent and utilities capped at 30% of the resident's household income, providing housing for healthcare and education. Workers will support Maui's need to attract, educate, and retain workers in those vital professions. Your committee voted 7-0 to recommend adoption of Resolution 25-139 CD1, which was approved as a form and legality by the Department of Corporation Council. And Chair, I ask the members' full support of my motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you. I want to thank West Lowell for his perseverance and commitment to see this project forward. As I've heard about it through many terms, but he's moved it tremendously. It is also part of the Economic Recovery Commission task. One of the items that was passed out of the commission, resounding with a lot of financial support to move it forward also. And I think that the county's role of this, which he has been, which Mr. Lowell has been able to embrace, he's taken it to where we want for workforce, housing, education, and for a healthier community. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
I see eight ayes, one excused. Member Paulton, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to resolutions. Currently, we have one person signed up to testify, and that's Jocelyn Costa. She'll be testifying on Resolution 25-167.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, council members. My name is Jocelyn Costa. I would like to state for the record that I have testified about this project before and brought forward source documents, which is a result of my extensive research on the lands of His Royal Highness Lunalilo. During previous discussions, a project representative, I believe, their attorney, confirmed title was that of King Lunalilo. Perhaps Member Lee could speak more to the title, since she was involved in the transaction with Sanford Carr to the county in another capacity. Was there clear title, then? Was there a quiet title ever done in the courts? I know the families who were arrested for trespass were never found guilty, and the judge encouraged the project to address the title. They never did. I know according to the law and your oath of office, this cannot be lawfully done. This type of title cannot be done in the court system of this county. Article 2, Section 3 of the Executive Department explains the doctrine of political question. This is a political question, not a legal one. I must ask if this body is acting as a political branch of the United States. I have provided a document of the article for your resource. If you choose to act upon a TMK and assume the payment of taxes, that's one thing. But in your resolution, it states requiring that title to all real property must be held in perpetuity by the grantee or borrower. Number two, the project must not be sold, exchanged, divested, or converted into other uses as set forth without the prior approval of the council by resolution. Number three, be secured by a first mortgage lien in favor of the county. I have provided for you King Lunalilo's land holdings according to the probate and the requirements therein that are required by the Supreme Court of the Hawaiian Kingdom to determine what you are now attempting to do within your resolution. Ignorance is no excuse of the law, and I come as a friend of the Maui County Council. I'm providing documents retrieved from the State of Hawaii Archives in hopes to provide enough first source documents for you to make well-informed decisions. I counted five who did not decide well the last time this matter came to the floor, which is why we're here today. This time, however, it is to break promises that was required before. Just as what happened in favor of the Wailea 670 Development, liability is your choice, if not now, in the future. I would request, I'd be asked to read on the record briefly the probate for King Lunalilo. In closing, I would like to, I would be remiss if I also did not mention resolution runs rampant in Hawaii nei. This is how they illegally seized our country through a joint resolution, and here we are today.
Members, any questions? If not, thank you very much.
I can leave this with you, Clerk.
Chair, Ms. Costa was the only person signed up to testify on resolutions, so we'll give last call for any testimony on the resolutions on today's agenda. Chair, seeing no one raising their hand and teams are making their way to the podium, we'll count down three, two, one. Chair, there's no one else to testify on resolutions.
Any objections to closing public testimony and receiving written testimony?
No objections.
On resolutions?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you is Resolution 25-166, authorizing a lease extension for 2145 Kaohu Street, Suite 206, Waileku, Maui, Hawaii to Hawaii Government Employees Association Local 152, American Federation of State County Municipal Employers AFL-CIO to June 30, 2026, and then month-to-month for a period not to exceed six months.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-166.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, second by Pro Tem Kama, to approve the recommendation in Resolution 25-166. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, Chair. This resolution extends the lease of county-owned property at 2145 Kaohu Street, Suite 206, in Waileku to Hawaii Government Employees Association. In 2023, the council authorized the acquisition of this parcel, approved a two-year rent-free lease of Suite 206 to HGA. Council approval is now required under Section 3.40.180 Parent A Maui County Code to extend the lease. The purpose of the proposed rent is $2.75 per square foot for a total of $8,406.75 per month. I have an ASF, which all of you have received, and I move to substitute Resolution 25-166 with a proposed FD1 version attached to my ASF. I need a second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, second by Pro Tem Kama, to amend the main motion with the ASF that was circulated. Vice Chair Sugimura, discussion?
Thank you. Members, the proposed FD1 corrects Lacy's name and incorporates technical revisions. I respectfully ask for the members' support. Thank you, Chair.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Looks like eight ayes, zero noes. I mean, one excused. Member Paulton, motion carries. So the main motion is amended. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes, one excused. Member Paulton, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you is Resolution 25-167, approving exemptions from and modifications to the requirements of Section 3.35.070 Maui County Code for the Halema'au'lu Ke'kahua Affordable Housing Project in the Wa'i'e'u Country Town District.
Pro Tem Kama?
I move to adopt Resolution 25-167.
Second.
Moved by Pro Tem Kama, second by Vice Chair Sugimura, to adopt Resolution 25-167. Discussion, Pro Tem Kama. Pro Tem Kama. You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Members, the Halema'au'lu Ke'kahua project is a 119-unit affordable multifamily rental project and one resident-manager unit. The project was approved with modifications back in 2023 by the Director of Housing and Human Concerns under Chapter 2.97 Maui County Code, after the council's time to consider the project expired. Last year, the council passed ordinance 5691 to grant a conditional district boundary amendment from ag district to urban district for the project. Now, the project is before us again with this request for exemptions from and modifications to Section 3.35.070 Maui County Code relating to Affordable Housing Fund grant or loan requirements in connection with the $6 million loan approved for project in fiscal year 2024. I am requesting we consider adopting this resolution today so we can keep this project moving forward. And I've requested the project representatives, as well as the Department of Housing, to be present today if members may have any questions. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Member Johnson, then Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, Chair. Usually on something like this, I'd like to have it in discussion in committee. So Councilmember Kama, what's the time sensitivity? Is there something that we need to move this forward on?
I think Mr. Moana is probably there in the chamber. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Johnson, allowing him to step to the podium.
I think Mr. Lyons is gonna come speak.
Oh, Mr. Lyons is there. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Lyons.
Yeah, Mo Moana is on his way. The time sensitivity is the rest of the funding of the project through the LIHTC system. That comes up once a year, typically in February. So we're trying to move this as quickly as we can to be eligible for those LIHTC tax credits. If we miss February, we get to go to next February for the project, for funding the construction portion of the project.
So the, excuse me. Mr. Johnson, you had a follow-up question?
Well, I just, I understand that everybody has to wait, or everybody who's in line for that LIHTC money, the deadline is February. I thought maybe we could have it heard before then in Councilmember Kama's committee, because we're talking about exemptions and...
No, but do you have any more questions for the testifier?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. So does anybody else have, since he's up here, any questions? So February is the deadline for submitting your application?
Correct, for HHFTC consideration of the LIHTC application.
So when do you have to finish preparing your application for submission?
Typically in January.
In January. Okay. Any more questions?
Chair.
Where? Okay, Mr. Hanano.
Yeah, so the legal team has come up with a question as to whether or not the FY 2024 appropriation from the Affordable Housing Fund has been encumbered.
Okay, do we have the... Well, is the Housing Director online, or is Ms. Sohaku online? Because she was there. Oh, I guess we have the new Housing Director here. Remy, after you state your name and your position, could you, did you hear the question completely?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, council. Remy Mitchell, Director of Housing. No, I walked in just as the question was concluded.
Okay, we'll ask it again.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hanano?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So the question is whether the FY 2024 appropriation from the Affordable Housing Fund has been encumbered?
No, I don't believe the funds have been encumbered at this time.
Any follow-up questions, Mr. Hanano?
No, Chair.
Okay. Any more questions for the Housing Director? Member Paulton?
I guess all my question would be for Mr. Hanano. Does it matter? Like, why did we ask that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. You can sit.
I think the issue is if the funds are no longer available, then it's moot as to whether or not, you know, the resolution can be approved or adopted.
So if they haven't been encumbered, are you interpreting them as no longer available? Like, do we have, as the council, have to reauthorize the 2024 funds? Or are they just always sitting there? Because Pulele Huo, we didn't reauthorize. That was not permitted. Sorry.
I'm consulting with our legal team.
Are we doing this work on the council floor? Are we not referring it to committee?
Well, we're just asking clarification questions.
Sorry, I...
So I guess the...
He started it, you know. He started. Staff started it.
Good job, Mr. Hanano. I like it when you're thorough.
I guess the additional question is... I guess the additional question is whether or not the funds have been gone, have been put back into the general pot?
Okay, I think now we need Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Mr. Mitchell, did you hear that question? I know you were talking to the other guy.
Sorry, Chair. I was talking to others as you having your discussion.
The question had to do with, are the funds still available to be used for this purpose? Or do they have to be re-appropriated?
The fund should still be available, Chair, and our practice has not been to re-appropriate it if we pass over the year that they were initially appropriated.
Okay, you're gonna be sorry you said those words. Not with me, Mr., I mean, Member Paulton is gonna be asking further questions. Any more questions on this particular project?
Oh, are we referring it to committee?
No, we haven't gotten to that point yet. We're still asking questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I guess my question is, in other projects, don't we hold on to the title or something? Like, I mean, Mr. Mitchell, in the past, for like, say, Kayaulu O Kupohi, when we funded their insurance gap, had wanted us to be the owner of the property. And in this case, it's not the same, and I guess I'm just wondering why?
Of course, you know MEO has title, yeah. Yeah, I know my name was mentioned, but the county never owned it.
Yeah, but, I mean, last time when we gave the money to Kupohi, we wanted to be the owners of it. So we spent additional, like, three point something million before we gave them the thirty-six million for the insurance gap. But in this case, we're just giving away money. And does that affect the length of affordability? Do we have the right of first offer at the end of the affordability? And like, I mean, kind of goes to my point that different projects get treated differently, which I mean, there's different situations. But like, the justification for one project, us giving them money, we wanted to own the property. And this one, we're not owning the property, and we're saying it could be sold. So just, I guess, all of the changes that we're considering, I'd either like a written analysis of why we're considering those and not in other projects, or I'd like to further discuss in committee, because a little bit, it seems, each new housing project, whatever we do forwards or backwards or sideways, comes with a different justification than the previous projects. So that's why I don't feel comfortable voting on this today, until we sort those things out.
Member Vice Chair Sugimura, did you have your hand up?
So I was just wondering from the department what their position is on what is before us today. Oh, I just want to hear. Everybody's talking around it. Everybody's talking directly.
Was this your proposal?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair Sugimura. This was proposed by the project proponent, but all of the exemptions requested are not dissimilar from exemptions that we have considered with other projects, where due to financing requirements, some exemptions are needed in our loan documents. So from the department's perspective, this is a standard policy issue on whether to grant exemptions.
So Vice Chair, do you have any follow-up questions?
Just clarification. So it's not creating an exemption or anything special. It's just kind of standard procedure that you're clarifying.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can ask more questions if you want, everybody, because we're in discussion, actually. We're not just asking clarifying questions. Anybody else have questions? Before I call on Member Paulton? Apparently not. Member Paulton? Oh, Member Johnson, I can see your hand. Member Johnson?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I guess I kind of want to ask Councilmember, comma, if we could shoot for November, if this was going to go to committee. February is kind of far off for this, just to have one of your, you know, committees to address this, because if I recall, this was not an easy, it was contentious. So maybe we do need a little bit of discussion. I'm curious what Councilmember, comma, thinks, if we can schedule it for her.
Pro Tem, comma.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So if you're asking me my opinion, and we already went through round one and all of that contention, I do not want to go through that again. And that's why I wanted to do this on the floor today. Whatever we went through that first go-around, and all the people that came that first go-around, I feel like we've already beaten this horse dead. And either we're gonna let the project go through, or we're not gonna let the project go through. Let's be serious, you know? We've got a lot of housing to build. We've got a lot of people that need housing. And every day that goes by, as things get harder and harder for people who are now are not allowed to be on Medicaid or EBT or public assistance, we gotta take care of those people, and they're coming. But let's take care of what's in front of us first. And that's why, Mr. Johnson, that is my honest opinion. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your honesty. That's, that's really important. I just remember this with the traffic, the bridge, the title, all those things. And we, we gotta kind of sort that out, and especially with this new state bill coming down with the amount, what we can do with any kind of adding money to these projects through our amendments and our modifications. And it's trickier now than it was before. So I'm curious if we could have time to discuss it. But I see other hands. I might not, some people might not feel that way, but thank you for your honesty, Councilmember, comma.
Member Uuhodins, is your hand up? Okay.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if Director Mitchell could explain in very plain language for me what these exemptions, proposed exemptions and modifications are requesting? So we have four of them. I understand it's standard policy, but if you could, please do me a favor and break it down so I can digest it all.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Member Uuhodins. The first exemption, Maui County Code, three point three five zero seven, A one, relates to permitting a transfer to the project proponent without council resolution that would require the director's approval. That is fairly consistent with many other projects we've done in the past of this nature. The second is subsection A three. That relates to the property being permitted to be sold, exchanged or divested without prior consent of the, with written prior consent of the Director of Housing. So that would occur either at closing or post-closing when you transfer to a qualified housing provider. Section B one relates to the priority of the mortgage. Typically, the county would want to be in first position, but for a variety of lending requirements, the county will need to slide down in its lending position. And then the final one relates to the interest rates, and that would be reducing the interest rates. And that's really what those exemptions are. And again, again, that's pretty standard.
Thank you, Chair. Okay. For number three, is that because they require LIHTC funding? So I think we've discussed this in the other projects that are supported by the state, that they kind of have the first right, and maybe we got second or whatever?
So I will defer to, we have our developer here, High Ridge Costa, Mo Mohana, here to discuss the LIHTC funding component. I would prefer to defer to Bo on that, since he's right here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Would you be able to come down? So, Member Uuhodins, can you repeat your question?
Okay. I just wanted, for number three, the reason why the county slides down in our, I guess, the priority of mortgage is because the state is providing us a bunch of money, and therefore, they come before us, as I think we discussed for other LIHTC projects, but if you could just clarify that for me?
Madam Chair, members, good morning. I'll lose for my late arrival. My flight was delayed. So this all has to do with the LIHTC structure. So that is correct. These funds have been approved for this project and have already been set aside for this project. There is no change. There is no change whatsoever in any of the aspects or the conditions of approval of the project as approved previously by this body. So that's set. All that is occurring here is, at the time of construction loan closing, additional funds in the tens of millions of dollars, for example, federal tax-exempt bonds will come in. That will be a senior institutional investor, lender. They come in first. Then the state of Hawaii comes in with the revolving housing rental fund. And then the Maui fund, as in any county fund we've worked in Hawaii, comes in after that. Those funds by the state and by the counties are typically soft monies, meaning paid out of available cash flow, again, as this loan has been approved. The request in front of you today is to simplify it. It would have come in at construction loan closing. We're asking for it to come before construction loan closing. For the exact same purpose of the project, it will remain. The reason we're asking for it to come sooner rather than later is because HHFTC has changed the rules of engagement and their qualified allocation plan across all projects in the states, asking them to advance their drawing closer to building permits, having understanding the long time it takes the various counties to process those plans. The approval is in place. As, as I said, we've kicked off the, what's called, construction drawings, architectural. These funds will be allocated to completing those drawings in order to make any Maui project, this Maui project, competitive against other state-owned projects, and direct such funds to the state of Maui, sorry, to the county of Maui, my apologies. And therefore, and that money will then slide in exactly as it was intended when the six million was previously approved at construction loan closing in the same process. All the transfers we're talking about is, as you know, now the property is in the name of MEO. At the time of closing, it needs the partnership, the tax credit partnership with the tax credit investor. So affordability, the plans that were approved, the conditions that were approved, all remain the same. This is simply a matter of moving the timing up, allowing us to send the money, spend this money on third-party-only project-related expenses. No overhead, no profit, only third-party-related expenses. Such expenditures and draws are reviewed by, by your housing department and approved and confirmed. And then they're audited by third-party, and audited by the state, and audited by the lender and investor to verify at time of closing, and they remain. The interest rate, very simply put, there is no income from the property currently to pay anything. That occurs at perm loan conversion. And as originally intended, when construction is done, lease-up is done, there's rents and income coming, we start paying down on these various loans, and at that time, they accrue interest, not before. So everything that the director has presented you today is fairly standard approach and is intended to direct federal tax-exempt bonds, federal credits, to Maui County, to this project specifically. If we don't compete for them, they'll simply go to another project in another county, and Maui loses out.
Okay, I think that answers the question. Any more questions?
Yes, it did. Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mohana.
We have another question from Members Senancy.
Thank you, Chair, and follow, Mr. Bo. I don't remember in our previous discussions having an exemption one that the property can be sold. I always thought that the property was gonna be managed by MEO. I, I don't know if you can, if you can correct me on that, because it now says that it's, it's able to be sold. And so if, if MEO is gonna be selling the project, I mean, can you speak to that about any profits? Or how would they conduct such a transaction?
Thank you, Councilmember. Very good question. The term "sold" is simply used in a transactional perspective. It is a leasehold interest. MEO will always own the underlying title, but there's a sale of the leasehold interest, so that there's a leasehold interest by the tax credit partnership that will develop and own this project. Those are standard, those are standard transactions allowing us to have that partnership being a leasehold purchaser. So that's the sale that's being described, it's just a generic term. And in turn, for the tax credit institutional investor, then to come in and enter into that partnership. But the underlying ground is with MEO, and they will not be receiving anything but the one dollar that they are committing this affordable land to in perpetuity. So they're not receiving any profits at the leasehold sale transfer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any more questions? Did you have your hand up, Member Paulton? Member Paulton?
Thank you. I guess I had a couple of questions. The first question, based following off of Member Senancy's question, might be for a lawyer. Does the verbiage in the amendment specify that it's not a sale, like how he said, that it's a leasehold transfer or something like that, so that we're very clear?
Court counsel?
It probably could be clearer, but I believe that that's the intent on the exemption. I mean, it could be clearer, though.
I mean, I, I would like it to be clear that what he said is how it is. I don't know the verbiage. The second question I had was, I don't know if it's for Mr. Mitchell or whom, but, and going off of Member, comma's talking points, we, we knew this was a very controversial situation the first time it occurred, and that these are standard verbiage that we're amending. Why didn't we do it the first time around? Like, why come back two years? Year, come back...
Yeah, if I may.
The developer can answer that.
Two years ago, when this project's approved, and as you know, the entire affordable housing program is currently oversubscribed in the, in the state of Hawaii. The requirement to start the working drawings was not in the rules and regulations, and it was not contemplated to use these funds early on. This is a recent change that was implemented last year. We've actually put this request very early in with the county, early this year, when the change occurred, and have just been waiting our turn to come in front of you for this consideration. That's, that's the reason this was not considered earlier. It's just we're reacting to the changes in the state qualified allocation plan and rules of submittal.
And, and when did those changes occur?
They occurred, I believe they were adopted early this year, in twenty-five. And one thing to point out here, one of the main reasons we're in front of you with all of this is this money is typically given as a grant. We're asking for it to be a loan, to be repaid. We could have went down the path, and MEO could have accepted it as a grant. But we chose to repay it to the fund and therefore have processed not only this one, but our previous project that's under development in Kihei, Liloahale. Again, it was offered as a grant, and we opted to take it as a loan to repay it to this fund, so this fund can be replenished for future projects. So do understand, this is of our own making, because we're saying we'd like to pay you back. We could have went down the path of a grant, granted it to MEO, and then it wouldn't be that case. So this, this is kind of best practices that we follow, and the county's been fantastic in working with us on the previous project that we did and on this one. But this is a request to make it a loan to be repaid back and not a grant as, as they are originally structured.
Thank you. I hope we can look into how LIHTC HHFTC made the changes, because we need to also make changes that they're not tying up our money until they're actually using it as well.
Yeah, good question.
So that is a good question. Your money's not tied up until it's used. Your money, actually, proposals are in hand. If it was, if this loan was here in February, as we started the process with the county, our working drawings would have been completed, the money would have spent, and the actual physical drawings would have been with the county being processed. The deadline for submittal is February, and they're going to measure every project by how far it is along the process. And it, we are now in August. So we've kicked off part of those plans, but we're in desperate need to demonstrate that significant progress in order to put this part project in a very competitive position. Delaying it further, meaning we don't continue on the drawings, we can't get it submitted in time, and will not put us in a competitive position again this year. So we are trying to be competitive to direct these funds, but these funds are not coming to High Ridge Costa. They're not coming to...
They're not coming to the partnership. They're being paid to third-party consultants to prepare the plans to submit to the to the building department.
And then I just had one last question. Was it always the plan not to submit in this last February? Because if the money was granted in like twenty twenty-four or something, why we didn't submit for the Lytec funding in this past February?
Very good question. The money that was approved before did not allow us to use it as pre-development. It only allowed us to use it at the construction. When we submitted back in twenty twenty-four, the rules said make sure you have your all planning discretionary approvals, which I believe we went under the two point nine seven. We met that requirement, but they did not allocate that year. They changed the rules this year and said, no, not only two point nine seven. I would like to see you ideally building permit, but I think that's too high a bar for anybody to achieve. Be like building permit ready, but as far as progress, when it changed this year, had we submitted, the application would have been non-competitive. It's about a hundred and twenty K in fees to submit an application. So we immediately came to the housing here in Maui and asked, can we move this up because of this change? The housing department worked quite well with us. There was delays for whatever reason in council timing and everything. And here we are today in August. But if this was in a perfect world, to your question, which is a perfect question, I would have been before you in February if it was my choice. We would have kicked up the plans, and I would have been able to say September we're submitting, putting us in a much better position than we are today. But we really need to get moving. Otherwise, any delay here is going to cost us another year.
And I saw Member Johnson's hand up. Member Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna guess this question's for Director Mitchell. So why was it taking so long to come out of the department? Then come before the council. Why does it take so long to get to the council?
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Member Johnson, for the question. I actually reviewed all of the email exchanges this morning on this project, and it really wasn't a delay within the department. It was a challenge getting it on the council schedule. So we moved fairly quickly within a matter of two months, the department. So that's the issue.
So was it the
Excuse me, one sec.
Go ahead, Chair.
I just wanted to, so you submitted it while we're still in the budget process?
We, I think we had budget challenges with getting it on the agenda and just
Sorry for interrupting. Member Johnson, please continue.
No, that's exactly the follow-up is, you know, why did it take four months to get on the agenda or four to six months to get on the agenda? Was it budget season? I'm curious what 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 our issue was.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Member Johnson. So budget was in part the challenge. We've had a number of submissions that we have had to delay a few times to get on the council agenda. It just, it's all an issue of timing.
Anything, any response from the clerks on that?
Or maybe, maybe Member Protem Comma might have some information along those lines?
I I don't have any information, Chair, why it didn't come to the council sooner than what Mr. Mahalo said. I mean, I just know that when it comes to council, then it gets referred to my committee. But this came right from Remy, and then you put it on, Remy sent it to us a couple of weeks ago, and you put it on the council agenda, and you wear it today. But I don't know anything more than that, Chair.
Yes.
So it's a it's a combination. Obviously, the requests had to be properly reviewed by the housing department, which they did, you know. And then after that was completed, the documents, the legal documents had to be prepared and reviewed because it's a loan. It's not simply a grant. Then we had to work with corporate counsel and our counsel also to prepare those documents that I think took up at least a couple of months, if not two to three months. Then council was in budget. It was one of those situations where all the things happened, but it was not a matter that anybody delayed it. It's just the matter, this this stuff takes time. It has to be reviewed. Corporate counsel has to review it. Our counsel has to review the comments from corporate counsel. The description before you, of which you're asking many, many questions about, actually has been thought through very carefully, including the word sale, because it turns out legally, and I'm not an attorney, the leasehold ownership is defined under the word sale. And therefore gives corporate counsel and the housing authority the ability to allow the transaction to move forward under a tax credit transfer by having that term. Because again, that's a legal term that is encompassing leasehold interest. So there was a lot of matters to work out. As always, as a developer, we'd like to move things faster, but this is the process it takes. It takes time to review it, but I think that between corporate counsel and the housing authority, they did a very good job in doing their due diligence and reviewing what is being presented before you today to protect the county, protect the fund, and make sure this is being utilized in the right manner. And to that, I give them credit. But as I said, as a developer, I'm hopelessly optimistic and always asking for things faster, but that's a genetic fault of mine. Forgive me for that.
Thank you.
No, I I understand that. I just, and, you know, it's if the lawyers hold it up, you know, and that's frustrating, but the ping-ponging of application going from here to there, it just, it just has to be a better way. I mean, I just feel like we've been done in budget since April, and then all of a sudden we have to rush now. We could, I don't know why it's like this, you know, we have questions and we, I'm not a rubber stamping body, so I think we should have, take time to look at it, but I I hear the this, what you guys say. I just want to express myself. Thank you, Chair.
Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. So our resolutions log have, has this resolution received on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five? And if I understand everything that is being said, that it was ready before February, that the administration and developer and corp counsel and everyone involved had eight months to review this, and now we're being asked to approve this in less than one hour, which is highly inappropriate. That we're being denied the opportunity for even committee referral at this point. That whatever discussion took eight months or more, that we as the council, who has the kuliana, to provide a public forum to our community, to be able to hear the discussions on why it took eight months to develop these exemptions and why whatever is being proposed and considered for our approval, it is not going to be publicly discussed in committee. Just because some committee members, including the housing chair, does not want to hear what the public has to say about this project, does not mean that we should deny them the opportunity to speak, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo.
Leave out the commentary. Member Cook?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the clarification. It sounds like it has been accepted by corp counsel. It's been accepted by the housing department. It's been thoroughly reviewed. The competitiveness of the Lytec funds is a perennial issue that we've had with all of these affordable housing projects. That funding is, am I correct that it is one of the principal aspects of enabling these projects to move forward?
It is the principal and only one available.
Thank you. And so the, yeah. So Chair, the council supported it. It's been vetted by corp counsel. It's been vetted by the Department of Housing. I'm an advocate of us voting on this today and enabling them to move forward because this is an affordable housing project that's really needed. It's been vetted, and I'd like to see people be able to move in. Thank you. Thank you.
More discussion? Vice Chair Sugimura?
I appreciate this discussion for clarity on situations or housing projects that have come before us, but what I really like about High Ridge Costa, they are a construction company which is a nonprofit, and they are proposing a loan. Projects that have come before us wanting grants, you know, try to get away with, you know, having that ability, but I appreciate that. I also want your clarification that the reason why there's an urgency today is because you want to move the project forward and have it ready as soon as possible, because HHFDC will grade us according to our ability to meet certain requirements, and this will take us to the position of being top of, top of mind.
That is, that is correct. Thank you for the question. It is the rating. As soon as this change occurred, we started the dialogue with the housing authority in February. And as we explained what we need and worked through it, our goal was to get these plans moving, and we've started on the plans, by the way, for the record. But it is critical to get it moving. It was vetted properly. It was reviewed by all parties, so that when it comes to you, it is the same loan that you approved. There is no increase in the amount. It's just a matter of timing, and it's for the same intended purpose, for the same intended project at the same levels of affordability and all the conditions of approval attached. But it is imperative, as as Councilmember Cook mentioned, without it, it will simply not score again next year, and that's why it was a moot point submitting it this year. It will be pushed to the year after. For the record, the state itself on various state agencies, which we happen to work with, including on a project here in Maui, which I won't specify which one, are putting their own money to allow us to advance the drawings so they can expedite the process to working drawing. On state projects, they're putting their own money up. So if Maui County doesn't compete, I mean, other state projects, they're putting the money up on them. This is the nature of today's competitive environment in Hawaii, and we are simply reacting to that to ensure that this project is needed. This project, by the way, aside from being critically needed for affordable housing, is very important in the Waileku area, because you don't see a lot of development, recent ones in that area. We are working on another state project, Hakili Terrace. You cannot relocate the residents to redevelop that site, because there is no homes available. So this is critical. Those those homes are in such dilapidated shape, they need to be acted on. We cannot act on relocating. This is a perfect example, two and three-bedroom large families, to relocate some of these families, not all of them, obviously, to be able to stay within the same district, within the same jobs, aside from the overall need without this project. So we can discuss the various needs, but this is a critical project. This is a critical component. Aside from the fact that this money is being used before construction in timing, there are no change to the facts before you from all the previous discussions and hearings that this council has had.
You're done with your questions? Any more questions? Yeah, I'm gonna let the resource people go. Thank you. Any more discussion, Members? Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to refer this resolution to committee.
Second? Moved by Member Ronz Fernandez, seconded by Member Paulton, to refer this matter to committee. Discussion, Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. As stated in discussion with the developer and housing director, this, the deadline to submit the application for Lytec is February. We're now in August, August, September, October, November, December. There's time. I take great offense at denying our community members the opportunity to have a voice. I do not support any effort of of censuring our people, even if it's painful. That is our kuliana. That's what we were elected to do, to to listen and to make space for our people to express themselves, even if we don't agree. This is a resolution, so there's only one hearing. If it passes today, that's it. That's the only opportunity. As I stated earlier, this in discussion, this has been going back and forth for like eight months or something, and now we're being pushed to approve it without it even being referred to committee. So I, while a lot of the questions were asked here today, there could be other questions, and in hearing the discussion, members of the public and community members who testified today did not have that opportunity to hear the discussion, to provide feedback on what they heard in the exchange right now. And so I do not support denying our community members the opportunity to give us feedback. We are elected by the people. We work for the people. So I know it's painful to hear things that, you know, that is painful. But this this project sickens me. It proposes to sever Kanaka from Aina that they have stewarded and have been servant to for generations. And while we acknowledge that there is a need for workforce housing and affordable housing, that there are a lot of other places, and we don't have to deprive Kanaka continuously, especially the government. I did not support any of the motions before this, any of the votes. I was in the minority in moving this project through. So when it says the council, when any statements say the council approved all these things, approve the six million dollars, approve the project for two point nine seven, I was, I voted against it every time. So I support a public process. I support giving our people their voice and not taking their voice away. So this should be sent to committee. Mahalo, Chair.
Any more discussion? If not, a member of Paulton?
And if not sent to committee, because Member Comma won't hear it in time, I would also support laying it on the table so that the folks who testified can now testify on what they heard was the explanation in council committee work today. Because otherwise, the normal process would have been from council to committee, back to council, so they would have had by right three opportunities to testify. So if the vote to send it to committee doesn't pass, I would hope the compromise would be to let it sit on the table for one more time and let them have a second opportunity to testify, but I'll support this right here.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, roll call. Member Uuhajins?
Thank you, Chair. I will not be supporting this. I'm okay to pass this today. I think this is probably why we have an affordable housing crisis, is because it takes so long to get things permitted. And I understand it took a little while to get to this point. But at the same time, we have ability right now to make it happen, to ensure that it doesn't take longer to house people. I don't know where the cognitive dissonance is, is when we say we support affordable housing and then we prevent it all the time. And I know that this is a struggle, and I and I get it. And I'm not saying this is the answer, but I, sometimes I find that struggle. When we say we support affordable housing, but we know it's expensive, we know the projects take a long time, and it takes a long time to even get to right now where we can discuss it. I'm okay if we wanted to hold it one more time to give the people an opportunity. I would prefer to pass it today, but in the spirit of compromise, I'm okay. I don't want people to feel like we don't want to hear from them, because we do. We've discussed this project ad nauseam at this point, I feel. But if we must hear one more time, I'm okay with that, because I'm not trying to silence people. But at the same time, this is, this is why things are so expensive. This is why we have a housing crisis. It's not just represented in this project, but it's represented time and time again when we discuss projects. So I'm gonna be voting no today, but I, but I understand, but for me, it's gonna be no. Thank you, Chair.
Protem Comma?
Thank you, Chair. So from my discussion, I just wanted to say that, you know, the council meets twice a month, the committees you know, the council meets twice a month, the committees meet twice a month, some more often than others. But those are all opportunities for our constituents and our community to weigh in on any matter they'd like to. They have all these opportunities too. And so I don't want to feel like, I don't want to listen, I don't want to hear what people have to say, just the opposite. But everybody has an opinion about everything. And not everybody is right about anything. But we were elected because people trust our judgment. They trust our judgment, even if we don't trust each other. They trust our judgment. And you look at the elections every time you run, and you look at all those people who voted for you. Those are the people that are saying, I understand you are my representative, and I'm okay with that. And they elect you. Sometimes not the same people that vote for me or you or each other. But nonetheless, they have those opportunities to speak. And many of them do. They come here all the time. We have the same letters from the same people, the same phone calls from the same people. We're not silencing anybody's voice. If anything, this council probably gives, is probably the most lenient of all councils for the amount of time that we give people and the transparency that we want to make sure that it's clear for our people. So I just wanted to say that and put that on the record, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Sinensi, then Member Johnson.
Mahalo Chair. I'm supportive of the motion, but if it does pass, I too would be open to keeping it on the table for next time, Chair. And I do appreciate you allowing us to ask our questions on the floor. I mean, I would still want to ask a little bit more. My hesitation, though, is, you know, I often drive through Happy Valley. And during, you know, two times during the day, that road is very congested. And that was one of the reasons why I didn't support the project in the first place. I mean, and I would want to, you know, to your suggestion, Chair, look into getting another access just for safety reasons. We just saw the tsunami warning evacuation. And that was a telltale sign of how things could happen should, did we have an actual emergency. So this area, for me, it's, yeah, it's housing, but also to make sure that our residents are safe and able to evacuate, you know, and should there be a reason to. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. So I support this motion on the floor. The sending it back to committee, if you guys recall, this was, there was a lot of discussions that really went unresolved. The traffic that Councilmember Sinensi mentions, I don't see it as changing anything, if not even gotten worse. Title ambiguity, the land swap proposal, all these things. You know, maybe we could move the needle on some of them. You know, when we look at affordable housing projects in total, nuance is needed. Nuance is needed. Our job is to look at the nuance and say, this is a really good project, but here's the negatives, or this project, no can. Nuance is needed. You can't just blanketly approve things. And I feel like we've been getting into the weeds of blanketing approving projects. You know, look at, I said it before, and I really think it's true, that the council, the county, we should be looked as investors. We're putting in affordable housing funds. Loan or grant, it's still big chunks of change. So look at us as investors. I'm gonna add one more to this topic, to this discussion, to this project. The lineal descendants of that area should also be considered as investors, as the be seated at the table on what their needs and desires are for these projects. I think that is really important and we're missing. I wish the developers, I wish the builders would look at the county council and the county in general as investors, but also look at the lineal descendants as well. So those are my points. I really think that this should go to committee. If not, I support the compromise of the HAMTA. Thank you, Chair.
Member Cook.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I won't be supporting the motion. Today, the agenda was approving the exemptions and the modifications or requirements. We've heard from both the developer, the Housing Director. If we want affordable housing and this project, then we pass this today and we move forward. If we go back into committee and we rehash it, and basically what I've heard from my colleagues is basically rehashing things that we spent days and weeks on, and the public had a copious amount of input. It was very contentious. I look at the council as an investor. I also look at the council as an impediment. Maui County has a reputation, Maui County Council has a reputation of basically being supportive verbally of affordable housing, but making it extremely difficult to do affordable housing. I would like to vote on the amendment and vote on the main motion and move on. Thank you.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity to discuss this. I am gonna be voting against the motion. You know, as the other members have spoken about, we've had a lot of opportunity to share our thoughts as well as to hear from the community. And I believe that we have not silenced people, that they have come forward today and, you know, in other meetings. And we hear them. It's a decision that is greater than this body to make. And so let that rest and be decided, you know, outside of this council. So today, for the motion that is before us, I totally support what is being recommended. But for this particular motion, to send it to committee, I'm gonna be voting no.
Anybody else? Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo Chair, and mahalo Member Uuhajins for your willingness to compromise. We have had affordable housing and workforce housing projects that have been completed like within two, three years, like very quick, when there's a lot of support, that things just move and falls into place, such as Ikaike Ohana's projects, and we can cite them all the time. They move quickly. There's a lot of community support. They do the work. They find the appropriate land. And so when there's opposition, then just listen to the community instead of like steamrolling the community, because then it costs more money. And then what the final product is ends up costing more money. And then we blame ourselves, the council, the government. We blame the community for being nimby's. But at the very forefront of this project, it was told, don't do this project. It's not gonna be built or it's gonna cost more money. So, you know, listen to the community. Yeah, I do. I support workforce housing. I support affordable housing, but not along the shoreline, not in fire or flood prone areas, not in wetlands, not in wahipana, not on stolen land, not on kuliana land, not to this place Kanaka. So I don't support workforce housing or affordable housing at any or all cost. They must make sense and they must be responsible to our people. When we take items to committee, the public has an opportunity to hear the presentation and discussion before providing their testimony. In council, they don't get that same opportunity. So we're denying them the details that they just heard in the exchange. So I can count, the motion's not gonna pass, but it sounds like we'll be able to have it in committee, at the next council meeting, which is bare minimum, I think. So I'm gonna still support my motion. And we'll be supportive of it staying on the clerk's desk, I guess, at the very least. Mahalo Chair.
Members, any more questions or comments? I wanna call for roll call right now.
Chair.
Sorry. Your member, Kama. I have, it's hard for me to see you because there's this message right over your face. I keep trying to close it, but it doesn't go away.
That's right. So you gotta keep watching tomorrow.
Yeah, you know, that's why I asked staff to let me know if I missed somebody's hand, because there is this message that says, you no longer can share your video, your camera has been disabled, right over your head. And so I can't see you when you raise your hand. Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to bring us back to where we started from the beginning. That the project itself is not the subject of the action we are taking. What we're taking up today is strictly about the financing of the project. Doesn't have anything to do with what we debated yesterday, last week, last year. It's only about financing. That's all it is. And that's all we wanna do is just let the financing go through, that housing can be built for our people. Thank you, Chair.
Any more comments, questions? If not, roll call. Councilmember Protevaka Tasha Kama. This is whether or not to defer or refer this matter to your committee.
No. No.
Vice Chair Sugimura. Councilmember Paulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ronz Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
No.
Councilmember Uuhajins.
No.
Councilmembers Sinensi.
Aye.
Council Chair Lee.
No.
Chair, there are four ayes, five noes, motion fails.
Okay, now we're on whether or not, Member Ronz Fernandez?
Oh, I wasn't, I didn't mean to cut you off, Chair.
No, I was just gonna bring up whether the members would consider leaving this matter on the clerk's table or anything else.
Yes.
Or maybe are there objections to that? Let's hear it. Member Cook.
My preference would be to vote on it today. I think it's been discussed in detail. It's been expressed to us that timing is important. The Light Tech projects are extremely competitive with the federal government, the changes that we've occurred, that we've seen. The funding for these projects is extremely expensive. Maui County's contribution by comparison is small, but it's profound in its impact. So I would prefer to vote on it today. And the fact that it is, what's on the agenda is what we're voting on is exemptions, et cetera, that have been validated, clarified by both the Housing Department and the developer. And I'd like to honor their efforts today by passing this.
Thank you. But you already heard, Member Noho, Member Uuhajin say she's gonna support it. So, you know, let's spend a whole lot of time on this. Member Sinensi.
Thank you, Chair. I believe we just took a vote on it to move it forward, but just to, it's been approved, but just to keep it for one more, one more time, correct?
It would not, the final vote on the resolution itself, would wait until the next council meeting?
The vote we just took was on my motion to refer it to committee. It wasn't the main motion to adopt the resol.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Was there another hand up? Or Vice Chair, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I think that Member Cook was pretty clear. I also, I think we're, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
Move this forward.
So, members. Member Uuhajin, didn't you say that you would support leaving this on the clerk's table? So if that's true, then the vote would be five for the other way, okay? So why go through all the drama?
Yeah.
Okay? Yes?
Yeah. I would, I would prefer to vote on this now, don't get me wrong. But in the effort to find some sort of compromise for the community and this council, I'm happy to leave it on the next agenda. That's not my first option, but I realize I don't like to fight with my council members. This is unnecessary. I would rather find a way to happily make us all a little bit unhappy and find a way forward. So if we must hold it to the next agenda, which is August, I'm sorry, September 8th, I'm okay with that, because it gives us space to work politely with each other for the rest of the day and the rest of our working life. But fighting over all the stuff, for me, is not worth it. And that's for this project and all the things moving forward.
I think we all agree with you. You know, nobody likes to fight over these things. I mean, actually, everybody's entitled to a different point of view. And how we handle every, and we have thousands of issues before us. So save your energy, everybody. Member Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Could you clarify what that would entail for the developer and the Housing Department?
Okay.
As far as if we're gonna postpone it? Is it a public hearing? Is it a discussion?
No.
To what extent? What's going to occur?
What's gonna occur is we would leave it on the clerk's desk for the next council meeting. So in about two weeks or so. And then we'll bring it up and have the same discussion. But the folks who have been watching this meeting have learned from the discussions of the developer and the Housing Director that they explained, they explained why the conditions are necessary. So that information was not probably clear to the public before, which should be clear now, and that may trigger more questions from them or more discussion.
To the public or us either.
Or the public or us. Okay. Yes, Mr. Cook.
So the testimony and questions would be regarding the success, the exemption.
Well, we would hope, we would hope that the community who test.
Not reviewing the entire project.
Right. We can't stop that, you know. But we would hope that whomever testifies the next time will focus on the four items, the conditions that are before us, and not, let's say, land title or anything. That's not on the agenda. Yeah. Okay? So if there are no objections, yes, Member Kama.
So I just wanna clarify what I thought Tom was saying, is that the testimonies should only be on the financial aspect of this resol and not on the project itself. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna be clear about that, because whatever finances goes on between all of those guys and HHTC, that's on them. Just like whatever finances you all got going, that's on you. I don't have any business in your finances unless they lean over into council business and stuff like that. But I just wanna be clear about that. This is about a financing exemption. And what we're talking about is a project that's been debated and voted and thought, put it to bed. But I don't wanna do this again, Chair.
I realize that, you know. But not everybody wants to vote on the final vote today. And in the spirit of compromise, what we're trying to do is give it one more time, one more hearing, in a sense that it'll be brought up at the next council meeting. Okay, so if there are no objections, the recommendation by the Chair is to postpone this matter till the next council meeting.
Objection.
No objections.
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, Member Kama.
So you have a, you have a motion on the floor, right? Because I made the motion. How do you dispose of that motion? Or do you just leave it?
We'll just leave it. We'll just leave it as is.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Member Ronz Fernandez.
Mahalo Chair.
Um, I, I think that motions are all disposed of when we adjourn the meetings and they don't carry over to the next meeting. I mean, it's not hard to make the motion again on September 8th.
Well, we've done it before. David?
I think that's a question for OCC. Thank you.
Generally, the, your current, the new rules, Rosenberg really is silent on motions that remain live for tabled items. However, in past practice, the maker has withdrawn the motion and the second has withdrawn.
Okay, but, but in this case, if, if there is no explicit rule against it, this is how it's going to be. Member, Alonzo Fernandez?
Mahalatir. Um, so my question for Ms. Thompson and Deputy Clerk is would it be preferable if I make a motion to set it on the clerk's desk or to postpone to the September 8th meeting? And then that would then supersede the main motion?
You know, I, I wouldn't mind consulting with OCS on whether it would supersede the motion, but Rosenberg's does talk about tabling and being a simple majority vote. If there's consensus, though, I don't see the need to take that vote.
The question is whether the motion would, so you're saying that the motion would just stand for September 8th?
Correct, unless withdrawn.
Okay, whatever.
All right, okay, so that takes care of that item, so it brings us, it brings us to which, which is the next one. Uh, we're still on ordinances and we'll be there for a while. How about taking a short 10-minute break? Okay, till recess until 11:11. Recession.
Will the August 26, 2025 council meeting please reconvene? It is 11:27 a.m. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could just take care of one housekeeping matter, I would request that Vice Chair Sugimura move to amend, or sorry, to suspend the rules relating to Rule 19. That's amendment at final reading for Resolution 25-166.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Took the words right out of my mouth. So move. Need a second.
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 Thank you.
All right. Moved in second and moved by Member Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Comma to, was it suspend Rule 19?
Yeah.
Suspend Rule 19. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Yeah, thank you. We did not make that motion at the appropriate time. So, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's see who's missing. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Somebody's missing. I see eight. Somebody's missing?
Shane. Oh, Shane's there.
Okay, honey. So, there's nine. Is there nine? Okay. Okay, nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Clerk?
Chair, we're moving on to ordinances. Currently, there is no one signed up to testify on the ordinances on today's agenda. So, we'll go ahead and give last call for any testimony on the ordinances. Counting down, three, two, one. Chair, there's no one to testify on ordinances.
Any objections to closing public testimony, accepting written testimony on ordinances?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Before you is Bill 115, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Appendix A, Part 1, Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, inserting conditional language for 0.9 LTA equivalent personnel.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you. May I ask the clerk also call up Bill 116 and 117?
Okay. Vice Chair, if you don't mind, because you have an ASF on the next one, can we just do them one at a time? Might be faster.
I don't have an ASF. Do you have an ASF from?
I had in my notes. Intends to adopt, will amend via distributed ASF.
For what bill?
116. You don't have it. Why don't we skip that? Let's move on. Ms. Clerk, 115. You called that up already. So, Vice Chair, let's handle that one.
Okay. So, you want me to do it one by one?
Yeah.
I don't have an ASF.
Or is there one for the next one? For the next, for the, let's do 115.
I move to pass Bill 115, 2025, on first reading.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Pro Tem Comma to pass Bill 115 on first reading. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Bill 115 has language to Appendix A, Part 1 of fiscal year 26 budget, to authorize up to .9 limited-term appointment personnel under the prosecuting attorney's, prosecuting attorney's Brian Justice Assistance Grant Program. And this amendment corrects an omission and ensures grant funding be used for this position.
Yeah, it's Byrne, yeah.
Oh, sorry. I didn't say Brian.
Okay. Any more discussion, members, on this matter? If not, all those in favor of the motion to pass Bill 115 on first reading, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Thank you. Aye. Sorry.
Assuming nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on Bill 116, the notes, the advance notes that we got relate to a, an amendment to correct the tax map key number, if that helps.
Oh.
Would you like me to skip that and go to 117?
Okay.
So, Bill 117, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Appendix A, Part 2, Plan Review Processing and Inspection Revolving Fund, Fire Increasing the Appropriation for Equipment by $10,289.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you. I move to pass Bill 117, 2025, on first reading.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by a member Cook to pass Bill 117, 2025, on first reading. Discussion, member, Vice Chair Sugimura?
Bill 117 increases the equipment appropriation for the Fire Department Plan Review Processing and Inspection Revolving Fund by $10,289. The increase is needed because a vendor bid for an SUV came in higher than the amount originally budgeted. I ask for the members' support of this motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to pass Bill 117, 2025, on first reading, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries. Okay. Now, going back to 116. David, did you have something on Peter Hanano?
Yes, Chair. So, I think initially, there is some intention to submit an ASF to correct the TMT number. However, I think in the actual bill, there is a correction that's made to the TMT.
Okay. All right. So, let's go back to that one.
Okay. Thank you. Chair, before you is Bill 116, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Department of Housing Housing Program, Emergency Transitional Housing Updating the Geographical Reference.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Chair, thank you. I move to approve Bill 116 on first reading.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by a member Cook to pass Bill 116, 2025, on first reading.
116.
116. Vice Chair Sugimura, discussion?
Bill 116 corrects the tax map key for property that would be purchased by Maui Grassroots Collective, Inc. under the Emergency Transitional Housing Appropriation. This technical correction ensures appropriation is tied to the correct parcel. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Member Johnson?
I just, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention that I seconded it. It was one of my priorities. And I think it is an important model that the county can look at to follow, to kind of have nonprofits, work with nonprofits on purchasing homes within residential districts that could help service the needs of these people who need it the most. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, let the record show that Member Johnson seconded that motion. Ms. Clerk? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For referral to the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Committee is Bill 118, 2025, a bill for an ordinance repealing Chapter 2.39 Maui County Code on the Commission on Children and Youth.
Any objections to referring the matter to the great committee?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Chair, for a referral to the Water Authority Social Services and Parks Committee is Bill 118, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 9.36.040 Maui County Code on penalties for prohibited noise violations.
Any objections to referring this matter to the WASUP Committee?
No objections.
So ordered.
Moving on to the ordinances for second and final. Before you is Bill 95, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Council Services Program, Office of the County Council for Amendment Number 1 to Grant G5401 Sustainable Molokai.
Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to pass Bill 95, 2025, on second and final reading. Second.
Okay. Moved by a member Ronz Fernandez, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill 95 on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair, and mahalo, members, for your unanimous support on first reading. You did hear from Ms. Williams. Mahalo, Ms. Williams, for your testimony in providing some of the information that was asked for at first reading. And also saw the final product that Ms. Williams, Ms. Mukua, and Ms. Place worked really hard on. What an outstanding presentation that they gave in my komike alohaaina. And anyone wishing to see that final product can go to the recording of that meeting last week, Thursday, which is available on mauicounty.us/agendas. Anyway, I'm just, I'm so proud of the work that they've done. And mahalo, members, for your continued support of this motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? A member, Sinancy?
Chair, I too raise in full support of this motion. And yes, it was mahalo to the Grassroots Collective for such an awesome, oh, excuse me, the sustainable molokai, wrong one. But they did an awesome job with the video. And just, Chair, it's an example on how seeing our taxpayers' money go towards a good project and especially when looking towards going into the future and setting a precedence for their own community. So, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yes. Our friends on Molokai are ahead of their time. So, any more discussion?
And real quick, Chair.
Pardon me?
Somewhat related to this item.
Okay.
Ms. Buchanan did hear your opening remarks and sends her aloha and mahalo to her favorite counselor in Hawaii world. Mahalo, Chair.
Love to hear that. Love to hear that. Okay. Any more discussion on this item? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Say aye.
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 Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries. Congratulations, Member Ronz Fernandez?
Mahalo, members.
Yeah. You had a lot to do with this, we know. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you is Bill 96, FD1, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Appendix A, Part 1, Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, Victim Witness Assistance Program, increasing the appropriation by $126,796.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
If there are no objection, if there are no objections, may I please request the clerk also call up Bill 97, FD1, 2025, and Bill 98, FD1, 2025?
No objections. Ms. Clerk?
Bill 97, FD1, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Appendix A, Part 1, Emergency Management Agency, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, new appropriation of $54,496. And Bill 98, FD1, 2025, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget, Permanent Management Office of Recovery Program, decrease category B by $25,000. And Office of the Mayor Administration Program, Boys and Girls Club of Maui, Inc., for a 2025 CAPEVA Youth Leadership Summit, new appropriation of $25,000.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, Chair. I move to pass Bill 96, FD1, 2025, Bill 97, FD1, 2025, and Bill 98, FD1, 2025, on second and final reading. on second and final reading. Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by a member Cook to pass Bills 96, 97, 98 on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Sugimura?
No further discussion.
Any more discussion, anyone? If not, all those in favor of passing these three bills on second and final reading, please raise your hand. Say aye. Okay, nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries.
Thank you, members.
Chair, and the final bill is Bill 108, 2025, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey Pacific Island Islands Water Science Center, United States Department of the Interior for Water Resource Investigations.
Member Cook?
I move to pass Bill 108, 2025, on second and final reading.
Second.
Moved by Member Cook, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill 108, 2025, on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Cook?
Thank you, Chair. Your Water and Infrastructure Committee held a Rule 7B discussion on Bill 108 at our August 18, 2025, meeting. The agreement supports data collection and scientific studies that inform water planning, watershed restoration, and drought resilience. I respectfully ask the members' support for my motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes. Motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the calendar. Any more business? Mr. Clerk? Mr., Ms. Clerk? Mr. Roth? Members? Okay. Then, this meeting is adjourned. It's 11:41.